Good evening. This eighth meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being on virtual meetings, please note that I'll recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and then begin to speak. Tonight's invocation will be given by Dr. Felicia Giggs Hudson of New Israelite Church of God. Pastor Diggs Hudson, the floor is yours. It appears that Pastor Hudson has not been able to join us yet. In the interest of time, I'll ask everybody to bow their heads. Father God, we come before you today as your 73rd council of the Baltimore City Council to do the work of the citizens of Baltimore. Lord, we understand and know that folks are in severe trouble right now. We understand and know that the pandemic has caused a lot of heartache and pain in our communities. We know that our young folks are struggling, our older folks are struggling, but you have put us, each and every one of us, here to do your work and do it for the citizens of Baltimore. We immensely thank you for the opportunity and know that you will guide our steps in the right direction. While we will not always agree with one another, we ensure that we'll have quality discourse, again, for the betterment of the citizens of Baltimore. And we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the ability to serve, and we thank you for the great city of Baltimore. Next up, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could, turn to a flag near you to say the pledge. For our showcase Baltimore this evening, we are joined by Brian Henderson of Baltimore Bikers. They are kicking off Baltimore Bike Week today, the inaugural Baltimore Bike Week, with some events tonight outside of City Hall at the War Memorial Plaza. Mr. Henderson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, City Council President Nick Mosby, for having us. And I just want to say it's really an honor and a pleasure to come before you guys and talk about what we've been doing. So for some of you who don't know or have not heard of Baltimore Bikers, Baltimore Bikers is now operating as a nonprofit under Fusion Partnership. Fusion Partnership is located in Baltimore, Maryland. They work with organizations that want to be nonprofits, but they help them, basically due to back office work, to allow them to push their agenda without getting caught up in some of the different things that come along with having a nonprofit, like the tax arm and bike account and different things like that. So I'll get more into that part of it in a few minutes. But just to give you a background on how Baltimore Bikers was started, in 2020 during the pandemic, when gyms were closed and a lot of people were just looking to get out of the house and having cabin fever, I decided to purchase a bike. I had long had a passion for bike riding and I needed a new bike. So once I purchased the bike, I seen a few people were riding, and I said, hey, let me just start a Facebook group and see where this can go. So upon starting a Facebook group, it probably was about five or six people to tag and to, you know, please invite other people. So on our first ride, we maybe had five people ride the Glenn's Falls Trail, which rides through Baltimore City. And then we came back and had a ride at the North Central Region Trail, the NTR Trail. We had 55 people in one month. So that number almost tripled once we had our first night ride. And the night ride was a big catalyst for bringing a lot of people out. So we started in Canton and rode through Fort McHenry and came back. And as our rides started, we started to get bigger and bigger and bigger. And before we knew it, we'd had over 1,000 people in the bike group just in two months. By the end of the summer and the end of the year, we had over 3,000 people join our Facebook group and over 3,000 people in our ass to bring. One of the reasons why Baltimore Bikers was instrumental was it was bringing people together at a time, council president just said it, we're in a pandemic, people were hurting, people were looking to get out, but people were also looking to stay healthy. One of the biggest things that played off people was, you know, no access to food, food deserts, insecure food areas, hypertension, diabetes, all these different things. So during the middle of this big, huge thing that was going on called Baltimore Bikers, I partnered up with some other bike groups, and we started to do bigger rides and more rides, and we were just pulling people out from everywhere. And I can definitely say collaboration is the key, and me working with other bike groups who had long been around, some of them before me, some of them had been doing work longer. We just happened to have more of a bigger group and pull out more of a casual rider. We seen that there was an opportunity to start educating people about health and wellness, as well as just getting people out to just be active. One of the things that we started to do was work with the bike shops. Preston Sports, longtime member of the Baltimore community off of Falls Road, they started doing workshops with Baltimore Bikers in that quarter, and we started working with Racepace, who own several different bike shops. And we started to know that there was a need for advocacy for black cyclists. When they showed up to different trails or showed up to different bike stores, they felt like they weren't getting the advocacy that they needed. So I stepped in, started working in advocacy, as well as making sure that these bike shops were also returning some favors and teaching people different things about bikes and providing education to make things continue to keep going. Through our work and some of our rides and different things that we partnered, the mayor's bicycle advisory committee gave us the new organization of the year last year. So that was a huge win for us to only be around for four months. And in November, we received that award from the mayor's bicycle advisory committee. Upon receiving this award and the different things that we were doing, I knew it was time to take Baltimore Bikers to another level. So I started looking into nonprofits and working with one of the nonprofits that's currently under Fusion. They suggested Fusion to me. And once I figured that out, I applied, and in February, we was granted a partnership with Fusion. So this allows us to operate as a nonprofit, to be able to connect with these bike stores, bike companies. We've been working closely with Canadaire. We have big dreams and big hopes of doing some major things in Baltimore City. We want to bring back safety cities. We want to be able to eventually open up our own building where we can have indoor cycling and yoga, so not only work on physical health, but mental health as well. We want to be able to have people come in and learn about dietary needs that may be diabetic, help people who are dealing with hypertension, be able to have them come in and get their blood pressure checked, but also be able to provide a facility that's going to allow them the opportunity to be able to work out for free and not be worried about if they can afford a gym membership or have the access to proper nutrition and different things of that nature. So we just want to do our part. Those are a few things that we've done. Recently, we partnered with Retro Fitness Gym in Catonsville that allowed people to kind of work out for a nominal fee. It had some classes to get people ready for their bike season. We've partnered with Johns Hopkins. We gave away several boxes of food during the pandemic, and now we're looking to just continue these partnerships. Like I said, collaboration is key, and we're working with as many people as we can to keep these things going. And today is the first day of Baltimore Bike Week. Baltimore Bike Week was birthed from an idea just to start something in Baltimore that's bigger than ever been done before. This, every year, the first Monday after Easter, we will host the Bike Week. This is the inaugural Bike Week. Like I say, it's opening day, not for the Orioles, but for Baltimore Bikers, and we're excited. We have a group of people gathering at War Memorial Plaza to kind of meet and greet, and then we're just going to take off and have a little ride for Miles O'Reilly, who's been biking in the Baltimore community for well over 20 years. I don't even think the guy owns a car. Have you ever heard of Miles or seen him on a bike, skateboard, hoverboard, any type of vehicle other than a car? I don't even know if he has a license. But today, we want to honor him and allow him to have his own ride, to be able to kick off Baltimore Bike Week, something that we're looking forward to 20 years from now. I'm looking forward to coming downtown on my e-bike and just hitting a button and following the fast kids around. But today, we ride and we start something new in Baltimore where we'll ride for seven days straight, culminating our ride with an all-girls ride in Baltimore City Sunday, and we also have a family ride that morning. So there's all different types of rides and all different types of activities, and we're just trying to use bicycling as a vehicle to promote health and wellness and bring people together in Baltimore City. Thank you. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Mr. Henderson, for taking time out of your day. I know you have to get down and get everything set up. The only other thing is, you want to go over a couple of the other events throughout the week, while folks are listening?
Yeah, so today is basically, like I said, the kickoff meeting, with City Council President Nick Mosby officiating that meeting and kind of, you know, giving us a kickstart. Tuesday will be our Lake to Lake Ride. That's a ride that's owned by a female, Lamise Stevenson. She hosts a ride every Tuesday from Drew Hill Park, and people drive from Drew Hill Park to Lake Montebello and back. And the ride is approximately 12 miles. It's intermediate, not, it's a beginner level because there's a lot of stops, and we wait for people, and we never really try to leave anyone. On Wednesday, the ride is shut up and pedal, and that bike group will be hosting a ride starting on Old Court Middle School, riding to the quarry out here and closer to the Owens Mills, Greenspring area. On Thursday, the ride will go from Drew Hill to Fort McHenry and back. On Friday, will be our night ride. To kick off our night ride, we'll have Downtown Locker Room sponsoring. They'll have a 40-foot truck with speakers and banners all over the truck promoting kids and people to Live Right. Instead of being Downtown Locker Room there, nonprofit is Dare to Live Right, and they sponsored this event with us. When we ride at night, we bring out a lot of the kids, as well as some of the wheelie boys, where people view them as being a problem. We view it as an opportunity to mentor and for them to be around good people and show them how we conduct ourselves as an adult. And then on Saturday, we have a mural ride. We'll be looking at all of the different paintings throughout the different cities, throughout the city where we'll ride around. And there's a young lady, insurer, who has picked out several murals throughout the city, black art, and we'll ride and we'll take pictures and we'll stop and then after that, we'll have a little gathering, social distance style. And then on Sunday, we have the family ride. And then Sunday afternoon, we have Black Girls Bicycle. They'll be hosting an all-female ride, which they do all summer as well. So these are mostly all of the bike groups that consistently host rides, Be More Bikers, Bike More Be More, 410 Bikers, Fly Riders. These are just some of the names of the groups who have been instrumental in putting this together, and I have to really give all the credit to them because, like I said, collaboration is key. There's only so many people who are riding bikes. A lot of the people are all in the same groups. Baltimore Bikers is kind of just a big hub for all of them, and with us doing our nonprofit, we're just using it as a vehicle to open up more things for the biking community.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. We appreciate your time. Go out there and enjoy yourself.
All right. Thank you. Look forward to seeing some of you guys out there, and I know there are a couple councilmen, I think, that do ride. So I've seen some of the names in Baltimore.
Brian Dorsey.
Yeah.
123 miles yesterday.
Yeah, you're very popular. Keep doing what you're doing, keep posting in the group. It's definitely welcome, and we just want people to know that we're just out here, people from all walks of life, all types of people from Baltimore City, just coming together and having a good ride. So thank you for your participation, and Nick Mosby has been on rides with us as well. He's not as active, but we're trying constantly to keep him active, keep his stress level down and keep him healthy. So please keep an eye out on what he's eating and...
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you.
Please put him on mute. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Now we'll get into the official City Council business. Clerk, will you call the roll members?
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a forum.
We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the March 22nd, 2021 proceedings are on the councilmember's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two and three of the agenda. We will now move to bills being introduced for first reading.
City Council Bill 21-60, Study and Report Fire Department Promotional Practices. For the purpose of requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department submit a report to the mayor and city council evaluating certain promotional practices of the department, specifying the contents of the report and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored: Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, Bullock, Middleton, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Dorsey, would you, I'm sorry, Councilman Burnett, would you like to speak on behalf of 21-60?
I would. Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a continuation into the work that we are doing to investigate the equity report that was produced in the last term and some of the outcomes of that report around hiring and promotion and disparity gaps that continue to exist within the department. And so this is a study bill to look into a number of the issues that continue to plague the department. Just a few statistics for those watching. There are currently 188 lieutenants, and of that number, 45 are African-American. There are 75 captains, and of that number, 12 are African-American. There are 37 Italian chiefs, and of that number, only five are African-American. The legislation will examine the progress that has been made within the minority participation in the promotional process since the 1972 Class Act and lawsuit on this very issue, and provide for an exploration of what internal policy changes could be developed to implement and address these disparities. So I look forward to the hearing and reviewing the report and our continued work on this effort to improve the promotional and hiring practices in the Baltimore City Fire Department. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you for your leadership on this issue, Councilmember Burnett. At this point, are there any additional cosigners to this bill? Hearing and seeing none, this resolution has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-61, Minority and Women Business Enterprises Self-Performance Credit. For the purpose of modifying the applicable self-performance credit for minority and women's business enterprise prime contracts. Sponsored: Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, Bullock, Porter, Middleton, Ramos.
Gentlemen from the 8th District, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Mr. President. And so this bill, as we actually discussed earlier, and I think you raised a good point, around the issue of trying to not only support existing MBE and their ability to contract with the city of Baltimore, but as you noted, creating armed ramps and to elevate new contractors, new businesses, so that they have an equal share, equal fight in securing contracts. And so what this does is, it gets at the issue of self-performance and ensuring that if an MBE is able to be a prime contractor, then they should get full credit in that application and their bid to make sure that they are, any work that they can cover, that is a part of their application, and that makes them more competitive and more likely to secure that contract. And so, again, looking forward to discussing this with our colleagues in the committee. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
No, thank you again. No, thank you so much for your leadership on this issue. Are there additional cosponsors to this resolution, this bill? I see the hand of Councilman Torrance. I believe that's it. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations as well. Madam Clerk, the next bill?
City Council Bill 21-62, High Performance Newly Constructed Dwelling Clarification. For the purpose of revising the definition of newly constructed, clarifying and extending the tax credit qualification deadline for certain high-performance newly constructed dwellings. Clarifying determination of the tax credit program, informing and clarifying related provisions, defining a certain term, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored: Costello, Schleifer, Cohen, Bullock, Porter, Middleton.
Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill does three things. It takes the high-performance newly constructed dwelling tax credit. Number one, it extends the credit for one year, so it extends eligibility from June 30th of this year to June 30th of 2022. Number two, it fixes quote-unquote blackout period for the period of fiscal year 2020 that was created due to an inadvertent change in state legislation. And number three, it establishes a 90-day buffer period for applications, which essentially permits applications to be accepted 90 days after eligibility terminates. This would not change the eligibility date in any way, shape, or form. I want to thank you for your support, Mr. President, and our cosponsors, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Costello. At this point, are there any additional cosponsors to this bill? I see the hand of Chairman Conway. I see Councilman Torrance. Any other hands? I see Councilman Glover. I see Chairman Stokes. So we could please reflect those four additions to 21-62. This bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee. Resolutions to be introduced. The clerk, please read the resolutions.
Resolution 21-36R, informational hearing avoiding an eviction crisis. For the purpose of calling for a multifaceted and comprehensive hearing on the looming eviction crisis and what we can do to avoid it by inviting the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Acting Commissioner of the Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Executive Director of the Community Action Partnership to report on the outcomes of the eviction prevention program and what more can be done, inviting representatives from the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs and the Esperanza Center to discuss the challenges runners who are immigrants are facing to provide recommendations on additional protection. And inviting representatives from the Public Justice Center and the Fair Housing Action Center of Maryland to report on evictions thus far, outline the rights of tenants now and the rights granted by new laws passed in the General Assembly and the City Council, and to make recommendations for additional protection. Sponsored: Ramos, Bullock, Middleton.
Councilwoman Ramos, would you like to speak on behalf of your bill?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution is designed to get at the heart of what is happening with tenants during the COVID crisis. The eviction prevention program has done an amazing job helping so many people, yet we're still hearing about illegal evictions. We're hearing that several in our Latino community are having some challenges, and so we want to get to what those are and then how can, what are some changes that we can make, or at least educating ourselves on the rights of tenants and to try to avoid this crisis. The courts are now open, and so we want to make sure that we're able to address all of the issues. And of course, I urge my General Assembly colleagues to pass legislation to protect our tenants as well, and I know the session is almost done. So I look forward to this hearing, and I appreciate that, I look forward to the dialogue, and thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues.
No, thank you, colleagues. I'll be on the lookout for you guys to raise your hand for additional cosponsorships. I won't call it out, but if you're interested, just raise your hand on these next resolutions. I see Councilman Glover with his hand raised. I see Chairman Conway with his hand raised. I see Councilman Torrance, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Dorsey, Chairman Stokes. I think that was it.
Mr. President, real quick.
Yeah.
I sit on the Community Action Partnership. I didn't know if that's going to be a conflict, so.
We'll look into that.
They're in the bill to be asked to come before us. Yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't know if that would be a conflict, that's all. I'll check it out, but I still support it.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, if you could read the next resolution.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. President. Apparently, Councilwoman Porter should have been a sponsor on there as well. I think it was...
I'm sorry, did I miss the gentlewoman from District 10? Sorry about that, Councilwoman Porter. Please add Councilwoman Porter as well. Oh, you did it earlier. So make sure we put her first in line when we add on the new cosponsors.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, if you could read the next resolution.
Resolution 21-37R, informational hearing studying options to rid Baltimore City of vacant properties. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Law Department, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Department of Health to discuss the feasibility of certain specific recommendations to more efficiently and rapidly improve the ability of Baltimore City to remedy vacant dwellings. Sponsored: Porter, Bullock, Middleton, Ramos.
Councilwoman Porter, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you so...
Uh-oh. You went out. Can you hear us? You're on mute. While Councilwoman Porter tries to come back up, can you hear that much?
Thank you. So, sorry about that. Thank you so much, Mr. President. So as many of you are aware, there was a house that collapsed in Pigtown a few months ago. So this legislation that I'm putting forth would seek to restructure the fines that we have for absentee landlords in Baltimore City. It's more geared towards looking at the receivership process and ensuring that we efficiently manage the receivership process for vacant homes in Baltimore City. This particular legislation actually came from citizens of Pigtown in my district, and so this is a true testament of community organizations really engaging in the legislative process and local government. So I look forward to the hearing, and I look forward to your support on this particular bill. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
It's also a testament to your leadership. I know this is a resolution you've been focused on for quite some time, ensuring that you wanted to get it right in the right way. We understand and know that this is an issue that has gripped the city all across the city, east and west, north and south, and we understand and know that this is a ripe and relevant time for you to bring this forward. So we appreciate your leadership, Councilwoman, on this. At this time, I think I saw the hand of Councilman Cohen. I see Chairman Conway. I see Chairman Stokes. I see Councilman Glover. I see Councilman Burnett. I see Councilman Torrance. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could read the next bill? I'm sorry, this resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, if you could read 21-38R.
Resolution 21-38R, expanding contracts with Georgia due to voter suppression. For the purposes of urging the mayor and Board of Estimates to refuse to permit municipal officials to travel to the state of Georgia on city business and to refuse to contract with the state of Georgia for businesses based in Georgia until Georgia's newly enacted voter suppression law is repealed. Sponsored: Stokes, President Mosby, Cohen, Middleton, Porter, Ramos.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, we know what happened in Georgia just here with two new Democratic Congress people. Well, the new governor of Georgia now is suppressing the African-American vote by saying, you know, we only have four early voting days, you can't feed people in the line. So if the city of Baltimore have any contracts, any traveling there in Georgia, and I already had support from you, Mr. President, and the mayor's office, that we can look back at those contracts and working with your office and also working with the law department to see if we have anything already signed to Georgia so we can send a message to Baltimore that you're not going to be able to suppress in Georgia, but we want to make sure it don't happen in Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Stokes.
I move for the immediate adoption.
Before we do that, I want to provide anyone an opportunity to cosponsor. Are there any additional cosponsors for this bill? I see Councilman Glover, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Torrance. So please ensure that the record reflects Councilman Glover, Burnett, and Councilman Torrance as additional cosponsors. Now Chairman Stokes?
I move for immediate adoption of this resolution.
Without objection to the rules being suspended? Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
I call for immediate adoption of this resolution.
You're going to move for...
Oh, I'm, I suspend the move to move for immediate adoption.
Yes, sir. All right. Roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance.
Aye.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Councilman Costello.
Aye.
Councilman Stokes.
Aye.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
The motion is approved. The resolution is adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of approving consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries, and the calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. First up, we'll go into health. No, I would like to, I guess, always recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
We enjoy your motion, not seeing any unreadiness or hearing any issues. We will go to short titles for remainder of the... We will go to short titles for remainder of the meeting. First up, we'll go into health, environment, and technology. We'll jump into City Council Bill twenty-one dash sixteen R. Madam Clerk, if you could read that bill.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash sixteen R investigative hearing building backups of untreated sewage.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution on March the 24th. I move the resolution favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The resolution is adopted. Next up, we're going into public safety and government operations. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first bill in.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash thirty-eight, human trafficking notice requirement modifications.
Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on March 24th, 2021. Was sponsored by Councilman Burnett. The, the committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments, and the amendments were sent to the council members electronically. I move the committee amendments.
Is there a second?
Second by Councilman Stokes.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Mr. President, point of information, what are the amendments? Can we just get them described?
Sure. Mr. Chair, if you could go into the amendments.
Ooh, I have to look that up. You caught me hot-footed.
I think it was actually just a bracket, right?
Normally, you're the chair with all, all the amendments ready to go.
There are, there are, there are two amendments. There'll be a floor amendment, which is just the bracket to your right, Councilwoman Ramos.
So, so one of the amendments, is it a technical amendment? Is that what you're saying, Chairman Conway?
Yes, the second, second amendment will be a floor amendment, which I'll present, present next.
Got you. So, okay, you, you, it's, it's not introduced yet, all right. So it's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye of adopting the amendments.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted. Back to you, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to move the floor amendment, and this is a technical amendment, which is going to add a bracket, as Councilwoman Ramos described.
Got you. So it's been properly moved. I hadn't heard a second.
A second.
It's been moved, it's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, please, of approving this bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. All right, it's been amended. I think now we have to actually approve the bill, so is there a motion to approve the bill?
I move the bill favorable as amended.
So moved.
Bill's been moved favorable as amendment. Did I hear a second? Oh, I heard a so moved. All those in favor of moving this bill forward as amendment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The bill will now move on to third reader. Madam Clerk, if you could read the next bill.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash forty-four, retirement boards composition.
Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on March 24th, 2021, and it was sponsored by Top Control of Bill Henry. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments, and the amendments were also sent electronically. I move the committee amendments.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second, Councilman Stokes.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of adopting the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are adopted. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Only heard one aye, guys.
Aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill's moved on to third reader. Bill's on third reader. We turn now to the bills for final passage. The clerk will read the bills and call the roll. If you could go into the first bill, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash twenty, Baltimore City Commission for Women, Ex officio members. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray.
Aye.
Councilman Dorsey.
Aye.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Florence.
Aye.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes, yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Councilman Costello.
Aye.
Councilman Stokes. Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, the next bill.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash twenty-two, security deposit alternative. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilman Cohen.
No.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
No.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Florence.
Aye.
Councilman Burnett.
Uh, uh, thank you.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Councilman Costello.
Aye.
Councilman Stokes. Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, the next bill.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash thirty-six, city code definitions and rules of interpretation. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Florence.
Aye.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes, very.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Councilman Costello.
Aye.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
The bill is approved. Now on to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. The first up, we will have Madam Vice President of Economic and Community Development Chair, Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Economic and Community Development will hold the following virtual hearings on WebEx. May 4th, 2021, at 2:00 PM, Bill Number twenty-one dash zero-zero-four-oh. The Flood Plane Management Code Revision, sponsored by the President for the Administration, and it was introduced on February 22nd, 2021. Also, on May 4th, 2021, at 2:10 PM, we'll hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-three, the Urban Renewal Middle East Amendment. The sponsor was Councilman Glover, introduced on January 11th, 2021. The next bill will be heard on May 11th, 2021, at 2:00 PM, and that's Bill Number twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-five, and it's the rezoning of 2,200, 2,205, 2,220, 2,300, 2,301, 2,310, 2,330, 2,400, and 2,500, which is at Broney Highway and Block 6916 Lot 015. Sponsor is Councilman Cohen, and that bill was introduced on March 8th, 2021. The next bill will be heard on May 11th, also, May 11th, 2021, at 2:10 PM, and that's Bill Number twenty-one zero-zero-four-five, rezoning of Block 4053 Lot 013, Ward 09, Section 020, and the sponsor was Councilwoman Ramos, and that bill was introduced on February 20, 22, 2021. And lastly, on May 25th, was 2021, at 2:00 PM, we'll hear City Council Bill twenty-one It's the informational hearing, Baltimore's plan for our neighborhoods experiencing homelessness and residing in hotels during the pandemic, and that was also sponsored by Councilwoman Ramos, and that will be heard on March 8th, 2021. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we're going to education, workforce, and youth. Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee is scheduling two hearings. The first hearing will be held on Thursday, April the 15th, 2020, will start at eight, 10:00 AM for Council Bill twenty-one dash zero-zero-three-nine, Local High Employment. The second hearing will be held on Thursday, April the 29th, 2021, starting at 10:00. This will be a legislative oversight hearing, informal hearing on the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund, and actually an update. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, we have health, environment, and technology from Council Chairwoman McCray.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Before, before we get to that, I'd just like to do a correction for twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-eight-R. I think it, I, it will be heard on 5/21, 5/25/21, and I must have said a wrong time.
5/25/21. Say it one more time, which bill?
Twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-eight-R will be heard on 5/25/21.
Got you, on 5/25. Got it.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President, for correcting that. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, April the 21st, 2021, at 10:00 AM on Resolution twenty-one dash zero-zero-three-two-R, informational hearing studying the feasibility of a small hauler incentive program. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will also hold a hearing on Wednesday, April the 21st, 2021, at 10:01 AM on Bill twenty-one dash zero-zero-four-nine, prohibited disposal, fines, and reporting, and both hearings will be conducted virtually through WebEx. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we're going to public safety and government operations. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill twenty-one dash zero-zero-three-three-R, investigative hearing on women in public safety leveling the playing field, Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, at 1:00 PM, virtually. The committee will also be hearing Bill twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-one-R, informational hearing, building a homegrown public safety cadet program on Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, at 1:01 PM, virtually. The committee will also be hearing twenty-one dash zero-zero-five-zero on Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. This is burglar alarms, registration, and regulation, false alarms. It'll be heard at 1:00 PM on April 28th. The committee will also be hearing twenty-one dash zero-zero-one-seven-R, investigative hearing, arson and fire fatality awareness, reinstituting the Baltimore City Joint Agency Arson Task Force on Wednesday, April 28th, 2021, at 1:01 PM, virtually. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we have rules and legislative oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing this Thursday, April 8th, at 2:00 PM, on the ordinance of Baltimore City Office of LGBTQ Affairs, and so I'd like to move for suspension of rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce that hearing.
Now, without seeing or hearing any unreadiness, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Floor is yours, Chairman.
I thank you so much. So, you know, that's, that's the only announcement for today, is that hearing.
All right, announce it one more time.
Thursday, April 8th, at 2:00 PM, for the ordinance of Baltimore City Office of LGBTQ Affairs.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, last but certainly not least, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, April 20th, at 10:00 AM, the virtual meeting on Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-six-R, investigative hearing, COVID-19 and small business reopenings, at the request of Council members, Conway and Porter. The Ways and Means Committee will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, April 20th, at 10:01 AM. This will be a virtual WebEx meeting on City Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-three-R, informational hearing, one for separate program, at the request of Councilmember Dorsey. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now we're going to move to regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements from chairs or members?
Mr. President, I, I would just like to have a, just a couple minutes to just express my feelings about the security deposit bill lightly. At first, I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you and thank your team, and particularly Nikki Thompson, your legislative director, has worked with me on this bill tirelessly throughout the last three, three months, and I also like to thank Eleanor De Pedro of the Law Department has, she has worked tirelessly on this bill, on weekends, answering questions, answering questions from the Attorney General's office. I mean, she, they have just been phenomenal. And also would like to thank Nikki Semulus, I mean Nina Semulus, gathering all of the supports, support from the agencies that basically had to answer. They were all very positive, glowing reports from all of the agencies. AJBC, Mr. Wells, thank you so much for helping and clarifying and how we exempt, exempted the, you know, AJBC from this bill, which was, you know, necessary. There was dialogue after dialogue with council members. I thank you, my colleagues, for reading the bill thoroughly, reading the bill, and adding, and we just had wonderful discussions. This bill was heard, as you know, on January 11th, and then it was a whole month. We had the hearing, a two and a half or more hour hearing on February 9th, and then another month. We had a work session based on what we needed to finish up from the hearing, but there was a whole month in between, the dialogue. As you know, as council members, we all have others, many things that we do, and I thank Nikki for continuing that communication, having four and five meetings. There was a lot of mischaracterization out there about this bill, and I just want to just clear up some of those things. This is a very forward-thinking piece of legislation. It has not been fast-tracked. January, this is a normal process from Jan, it took January to today, which is April. The Maryland Insurance Administration of our state regulates all companies, which is all, all company, insurance companies, which is stated in this legislation. Our job is to give oversight and monitor. Our job is to give oversight and monitoring of things that we put in. This bill is a bro, is a barrier that we have broken, and we're going to have more bills like this to break the barriers. I am, Mr. President, as you see, passionate about this bill because over my years in life, I have experienced so much discrimination, and this is one of them. I could stand here and give all of the examples where I have experienced not being able to get in certain communities because of a security deposit personally. And throughout here, I have built, throughout this, working on this, I have built relationships from people working on this bill that has also had their own personal experiences. And as of today, in front of City Hall, I applaud the faith-based black pastors of the faith-based community coming out in support of this bill on their own. Because as you know, the faith-based commu, many people in the African-American community, they, they rely on church also helping them through housing situations. Um, you know, I, these are tools and, and options that are needed to help people, and that's what we are here for. That's what we took our pledge to do, to help people. I have a fourteen-year track record of helping people, and my word is my bond. And, and when this bill is signed by, um, Mayor Brandon Scott, we're going to do what we do as council, council members. Monitor, we monitor this bill, and, and if there are problems, we're gonna come back with legislation to correct it. Why do you think we put together Transform Baltimore? That's, those are pieces of things that we had corrected over years and years and years of problems. So, I applaud this council and all the members that stuck with me and listened and read the bills, and I appreciate your support on this, and thank you again, Mr. President, for giving me this time.
No, thank you. As the dean of this august body, this Seventy-third Council, Baltimore City, um, as well as, uh, being vice president, the deference for you to lay out your passion for a bill that you fought so hard for, uh, for so long, with so many different advocates, with so many different other groups, you know, it, it, it's a pleasure and it's an honor to give you that time and that space. I think everyone heard your passion. Uh, you will be happy to know that the bill is already off to the mayor. I had the luxury of watching, um, the emails go out, uh, while we're in the middle of this meeting. So, again, uh, thank you for all your passion regarding this particular piece of legislation. It's so ripe for this particular time. Are there any additional regular announcements? Uh, yes, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I just wanna get a moment of silence to, you work with Councilman Carl Stokes on the council because his mother just passed away.
Oh, wow. Uh, do you know her, her, uh, her name, Chairman Stokes?
I don't, I, I put it ahead of my phone, but I don't.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll add her in the moment of silence as, um, the mother of, um, former Councilman, uh, Carl Stokes. Uh, he meant a lot to this body, and if you work with him, you know how much his mother meant to him. Um, Chairman Stokes, if you could get the formal name, and we'll make sure we're gonna read it in. But, uh, for this meeting, um, Madam Vice President, if we could just read it in as the mother of, um, former Councilman Carl Stokes. Uh, yes, uh, Councilman Glover?
Yes, thank you, President. Uh, I just want to acknowledge again, thanks to my colleague, uh, Steve Cohen, over in the, uh, First District. Uh, he's seen how hard, you know, I've been working down at the, uh, bottom part of my district in the Elwood Park community, uh, trying to get trash removed and get those, uh, abandoned vehicles removed. Uh, he see the difference between, you know, our, uh, districts, uh, by way of Fayette Street, uh, uh, how one side sometimes get a little more, um, cleaned than the other side. And he's, uh, willing to step up, uh, with some of his residents in his district to come over on April the tenth to help us, uh, clean, uh, Elwood Park up. You know, um, he, it, it, it's really great just to have your neighbor, um, and district, you know, District One, just to come over and, and just lend a helping hand. And I just encourage, you know, all of us to, uh, you could save for each other's, um, respective districts.
Well, Councilman Glover, let's turn fifty into five hundred. Why don't you have the ability, the floor, invite the rest of your colleagues in the city to come out to your event?
You know what? I would love, I would love, I would love to have that happen, you know, but I know, uh, uh, half a loaf is better than no loaf. But if they, if you guys all wanna come over and pitch in, I would greatly, greatly appreciate it. Um, it, it's been hard fought. I've, I've reached out to the business community to help me get, uh, roll-offs in our, uh, in our community. If you guys can come out, I promise you that I'll go to your district and do the same with the same energy in your district to help clean, uh, Baltimore.
This is, this is one city. What are, what are the details, uh, Chairman, uh, Councilman Glover? Uh, what's the time?
So, it's, it's April the tenth, uh, we're gonna be meeting up on, uh, we're gonna be meeting at Banner, between Banner Neighborhood, which is at the, uh, twenty-eight-hundred block of, uh, East Fayette Street. And we're gonna be working our way over to the Elwood Park community. Uh, and another thing is some of the, the kids that live in the neighborhood, uh, this is how they're gonna get their service hours, uh, for high school. So, we're, we're, we're doing this all together. We are one Baltimore. But again, if you guys are not, um, doing anything on that day, please come out and help.
What time, Councilman Glover?
Uh, we're starting at nine o'clock A M.
Nine o'clock. Are you, are you, are you providing lunch for us? I'm joking. I'm joking. It, it, we got it, though. April the tenth, uh, at nine o'clock at the twenty-eight-hundred block of East Fayette, correct?
Banner, yep, Banner, we're gonna start at Banner Neighborhood.
Got it.
And, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, Cohen, you wanna add anything to this, brother?
Councilman Glover, this is my, this, I call people out to speak. We appreciate all your amazing, uh, uh, spoken words about your colleague. He actually has his hand raised, but we're gonna go to Councilman Torres, and then we'll go to Councilman Cohen. So, Councilman Torres, your hand raised sometime.
Uh, yes. As a native of, um, Latrobe Homes, it is, I just wanna lift up, and I see Councilwoman Ramos lifting up, Ms. Dolores Stokes' name. She is a legend in the Latrobe Homes. Actually, a little look, no, small note is that Carl Stokes and I actually live in the same public housing unit in different years of our lives, and just to say that, like, his mother name still resonates in that community. So, I just wanna make sure we lift up Dolores Stokes.
Wow, wow. Thank you for that. Thank you for pro, providing the information. Uh, Councilman Cohen, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. No lunch, but there will be donuts and coffee, so come on through. Um, I did want to invite folks tonight, um, and apologies, this is late, but we are doing a vigil for two members of our community that lost their lives, um, in the Baltimore Highlands area tonight at seven-thirty, um, at the Conklin Street Garden, which is twenty-five South Conklin Street. Um, we'll be honoring Fabian Mendez and Marcus Wilson, as well as other victims of violence that have lost their life. Um, they were tragically murdered last week, um, in our community. And so, if anyone would like to join, please feel free.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Cohen, for that. Are there any additional regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none, I would like to recognize Vice President Middleton. He goes first.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five P M. And maybe we have a moment of silence for the, um, mother of, uh, former council member Carl Stokes.
And I believe that was, um, real quick, I believe that's Ms. Rebecca Stokes, is that right, James?
Dolores Stokes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, if we could get, so if we could read our name in, um...
Dolores, yeah.
So, the mother of, um, Carl Stokes, Ms. Dolores Stokes?
Yes.
And, and also the seventy-five now victims of homicide year-to-date, and the families of the eight-hundred-and-fifty-six victims of COVID since the pandemic began. And of course, we continue to pray for the families that suffer from that, from the opioid epidemic. Thank you.
No, thank you. So, we lifted up our brother Carl Stokes tonight, um, the passing of his mother, uh, Dolores Stokes. And as the vice president, vice president said, the seventy-five victims of homicide, as well as eight-hundred-and-fifty-six Baltimoreans who've lost their lives to COVID-nineteen, we're gonna take a moment of silence now. Thank you, there being no further business. This concludes the eighth meeting of the Seventy-third Term of Your Baltimore City Council. Uh, Baltimore, as we see these numbers continue to go up from a COVID perspective, it's really important, uh, for us to continue to wash our hands, stay socially distant, uh, and ensure that we're wearing masks. Um, I know that a lot of norms are coming back, especially as the temperature continues to warm up, uh, and it's, as things have become, uh, open again. Uh, but it's really important, uh, there's folks that are right now in hospitals across the city that are actually fighting and battling this disease. It is not gone, it is not finished with. We need every single person in the city, uh, to help drive this thing away forever. Baltimore, we love you.